I thought I just did that.
Some of the ground rules. People will say, they signed up. If you haven't signed up, you're in the hallway. If you want to speak, there's a sign sheet right here if you'd like to speak. You know, everyone is limited to five minutes. You cannot hand off your time to someone else. And I want to remind you that your comments are addressed to the council and not each other. This is not a debate. Public hearing. You're addressing the council. Your statements will be accepted until Thursday at 5:00 p.m., April 3rd. And that's it. Start it. Bruce, go on the list. And, uh, Garrett, do you? Oh, I'm sorry. First, clerk will call.
Any people there?
Councilmember Ballen.
Uh, this is a whole new setup. I don't know. This is Teams Microsoft. I've never done this. I don't know.
That's Ludy.
Yeah.
She's online? Yeah, she just said.
Oh, wait, sorry. I didn't. Hi, here.
Luranty.
Here.
Lisa. Morris.
There.
Warren Hagan.
Here.
Roberts. Cronie. Sauer. Volo.
Here.
President P. Page.
Here. The public.
Tom, turn to ask your question.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, we started.
First, no, it's not the process. So, people on the line.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me make that clear. People on line just speak after the in-house speakers and in the order at which they raise their hands. So if you're on line and want to speak, raise your hand and you will speak in that order because the computer registers your raised hands in order. This public hearing has been duly advertised. This is officially speaker March 1st, 27th. Additionally, the hearing will be timed remotely through Microsoft Teams. Now, like, of a comment, you can state your name and address of the record, but it is not mandatory. So, Garrett, you can use the list of speakers. Thank you, Morgan.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. First up, Alex Blasner.
Thank you, Council President. Thank each of you for giving up your Monday evening to join us this evening.
Please speak louder, Morgan.
Yes, of course. I come before you this evening asking you to set aside personal considerations and in an unbiased manner, consider the proposed charter changes endorsed by 240 of your constituents, filed with the city clerk on the 5th of March and placed on the council president's desk on the 7th of March. That filing set in motion a 60-day period for your consideration of the proposal and action thereof. Set by New York statute, the timing of the review is not arbitrary. Thirty-six of the 60 days remain for you to take action. Other speakers this evening may address specific aspects of the proposed changes and why they were included. I'd like to discuss how we arrived at this point this evening. The proposed charter changes have traveled an interesting journey. First and foremost, the group that authored these changes is entirely outside government, not elected to do this with no mandate beyond that of all citizens to do what they can to better their own community. We did not undertake a comprehensive or wholesale charter reform. Rather, we set out to remedy a specific perceived shortcoming. Our work is based on the observation that no mayor, Democrat or Republican, male or female, white or black, over the last 20 years, has had the skill, education, or expertise to articulate or implement a plan to improve management of many of the city's basic needs. This group of well-meaning officeholders simply have not had the benefit of specialized education and experience needed to manage a modern-day city. Equally, no mayor has articulated or implemented a plan to solve management of the city's dwindling discretionary income. Our goal is to employ the lightest possible touch to the charter to inject professional management into the city's day-to-day operations. As our thoughts came together, our group made a firm agreement at no time would we be critical of any elected officeholder. The project is not about people or personalities. It is about government structure. Inviting citizens from all walks of life, I became a daily visitor at our coffee shops, explaining and listening to everyone who joined me. I asked each elected Hudson official to meet. Two members of this council failed to respond. In response to my invitation, the mayor politely said in part, "I've come to the conclusion that this is a change I cannot support." At the time of that response to my request for a meeting, the thoughts of the study group had not been finalized nor published in draft form. Indeed, they were still in flux. I was seeking input. The president of council responded more directly. "You're hardly an ordinary or disinterested constituent, but part of a group of cronies who have sought to undermine the current administration from the beginning." Americans' confidence in their elected representatives is at an all-time low. Conversations with members of our community over the past year found a similar lack of confidence in this government. By running for office, each of you asked to serve us, to work for us, to represent us. In exchange for our votes, you agreed to listen. We placed our confidence in you. It is fundamental to this voter representative contract that you have an open, mutually respectful conversation. That does not mean we will always agree. It does mean both sides will be open to listening to concerns and ambitions for Hudson. It has been said the proposal is not a perfect document. From the beginning, I explained to each elected official with whom I met that you may adopt it as your own and change it as you see fit. We offered to assist with incorporating your thoughts. No one has taken up that offer. This document is an unbiased effort by citizens to address the foremost needs of our city government, those of experience and expertise. I ask again, for the benefits you will bring to our city, you set aside personal considerations and view the proposal in an unbiased manner. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Don Moore.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. I will endeavor to be brief in to dispel the misinformed alarms set up by a few of our friends concerning the authority of the city manager in our proposal to veto what are called audits. When specifics are cited in these criticisms, references made to the city charter, Article 6, Section C6-2, which with a mayor in place provides vetoes for local laws, ordinances, resolutions, and audits. Our proposal provides authority to the city manager only for audits. The veto authority has been characterized, I think disappointingly, as an extreme redistribution of powers. I think sophistry is not a service to understanding. If attention is paid to the ongoing mundane but important city governance practice, it would be understood that an audit refers explicitly and admittedly arcane technical language to the common council's regular monthly review and approval of bills to be paid. Here's what the charter says in Article 6, Section 66-2. Quote, "The clerk shall present each audit of the common council. The audit is the entire list of bills to be paid. If the city manager shall approve it, he or she shall sign it and return it to the city clerk within three days. If he or she disapprove it or any item or items of an audit." In other words, one of that list of bills that are being paid, one could be one that needs to be challenged, not the entire list. That's, that's a thorough audit. Within three days after the presentation took place, return it to such, return it for such item or items with statement of his objections in writing to the city clerk, who shall present the same to the common council, who can reconsider it, and if they disagree, overrule the veto with a supermajority. In our case, that would be four out of five. What hasn't been referenced before, of course, is Article 6, I'm sorry, Article 12, Section C1221, that reinforces this. In quote, "In case the city manager shall veto any audit or item or any audit of any audit under the power conferred by him or her by C6-2 of the charter, the city shall forthwith, upon receiving the statement of the city manager's objection thereto, in writing, notify the city treasurer, and the city treasurer shall not pay any such audit or item thereof unless, upon consideration thereof, the common council, board, or commission making such audit, three quarters of its members shall agree to pass the same. The city treasurer shall not pay any audit or any item of any audit until after the expiration of six days of this term of the date of making the same." Technical language, but what it says is that the audit can be seen as a whole or as a part. The audit is explicitly the review of each month's expenses proposed to be paid and approved and approved by the common council. There is however, there is a however, explains the veto. If the council is presented with or wishes to approve a payment that exceeds the amount available, that quote, "audit or any item thereof," end quote, from the specific account for which, from which is to be drawn, then the mayor or the city manager has the responsibility to veto that expenditure with an explanation because it exceeds the lawfully approved adopted annual budget. And even then, the council can approve the payment of the three-quarters vote override veto. Of course, the council will need to take money from somewhere for raised taxes. My memory, the city has been blessed with competent treasurers and city clerks going back decades. No veto was needed. Let's hope Hudson continues that lawful track record. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Crystal Heinz.
Good evening, Crystal Heinz. I am a resident of the Fifth Ward. I also have my legal practice on Warren Street. I've helped Hudson my home for the past 23 years. During that time, I've seen the same issues, language in the city, sidewalk legislation, LWRP, zoning changes, the comprehensive plan. Seems like whatever administration is coming and going, the same issues plague the city and we don't really get resolved on these issues. And so a couple of years ago, a few of us got together to try to figure out what we could do to make the city work more efficiently. How could we get these things to happen more timely? How could we get them to happen at all? And we started doing research and we found that not just here in New York State, but throughout the country, a lot of cities and towns have moved over to city manager systems. City manager brings skills to the table that our general mayors don't. We don't have mayors that have advanced degrees in planning or development or anything like that that can bring the skills to the city that we need. So we got together and we decided to change the charter and bring it to you here and ask you to help us with this. I think that we all see the cities, the issues that plague the city. I think we all want to make Hudson a better place. And I think the time is now to make that change, to bring in the 21st century management, to bring the city along forward with it. So we can timely get grants. We can timely do things that we need to do here as a city and for all of our residents, not just those residents that would like to be here, that want to live here with all of us here. I feel as though that the vision for the city has become very myopically focused on housing. While that's important, there's a whole bunch of other stuff that needs to be tended to in the city as well. You know, there's, there's a big push against tourism. We don't have a lot here other than. I mean, I feel as though we have to really nurture those assets that we have in the city to all of our benefit. And I think that we, we get there is moving forward with the city manager. And I, I would encourage you all to, to look at this more closely. Look at not just what we presented to you, but look at what other cities and towns have done throughout the country and how that's helped their municipalities. And I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next up is Dan Runahan.
Good evening, Council President. My name is Dan Runahan. I live in the Fifth Ward. I'm an attorney. I currently work at the Department of Health in New York City. My involvement with this project, as it were, was really mostly at the beginning when a bunch of lawyers, as Crystal was saying, got together to see what we could do to improve our city charter. And the goal of changing to a city manager is really based on finding someone with expertise, experience in running a small city in the 21st century. This is not a simple matter anymore and it's not a part-time job anymore. One example of that, of that trust that we would like to create in a city manager is our very talented treasurer. She comes to us with training and education in finance and she's been able to do some very complicated things for the city of Hudson, like she was able to issue our first bonds. These are not simple items that, you know, someone who has no experience in municipal government can do. This is the vision with the city manager that we have for Hudson. We just think that the issues facing us today, unlike in the past, are complicated, multi-layered, and require some form of training, expertise, and we think that would benefit all of us in moving forward our plans for a better Hudson. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, oh, Carolyn Lawrence.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Carolyn Lawrence and I'm looking at you first. And I'm the real estate broker. Hudson since, gosh, 2007. And to be brief, I certainly agree with what I've heard so far this evening as far as professionalizing the management of the city. And I so support the charter change to provide that professional management and thereby create more accountability, provide more effective communications, and increase transparency. And also, to represent all members of the community. I know Crystal just mentioned the focus on housing. And I always, I always want that to be expanded when I, when I hear housing mentioned because I think there's so many other issues that need to be addressed. And so I think to truly represent the entire community, I really would encourage that. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next up, maybe, Nick Hadad. Yes, sorry. Hi, I should mention, you wrote maybe, something. I wrote maybe. I wrote maybe because I was feeling maybe. Hi. Good evening. Thank you, Tom. Thanks for having this meeting tonight. You know me. I'm Nick Hadad. And a while back, I had the privilege of serving on this very same council. And so I come to this conversation, really importantly, more than just familiar with your commitment and responsibilities to the city. I want to stress that this citizens initiative before you at the, in this hearing is not a referendum on present or past administrations or the conduct of councils, present or past. It is a proposal whose time has come. These days, the world moves at a very fast pace. The future is upon us before we even know it. The issues before the city government today are unlike anything ever envisioned by our founding fathers, which we've, we've suffered with their, you know, decisions a long time ago or even in recent history. And addressing these overarching considerations and contemporary issues requires more formal training and understanding of law and finance than ever envisioned. The stressors on the city in regard to dwindling finances, antiquated infrastructure, unpaid property taxes, and little workforce housing, I believe, require us to consider professional management. Imagine for a moment, and you don't really have to, that the city of Hudson is a small business. Small businesses compete in an environment which requires them to be knowledgeable, nimble, and responsive. Skill sets and training are paramount for those in any negotiation, whether it be in employment contracts or purchasing. The role of a city manager has worked in cities across the nation as well as in Dior. And I think it'll work here too. So, the role of the council will be to choose that manager with credentials who will work at the pleasure of the council. That means that the manager may be removed for cause. The council remains in its role to promulgate laws and act in the best interests of the council, interests of the citizens. The only veto power offered to the city manager is with regards to the BEA, which in and of itself is a financial regulatory agency. And the mayor remains as an elected official, whose responsibilities will not be those falling to the city management. So I think that, you know, going forward, it's something that should be considered by the council. It makes sense for us. We are in a situation, not, not in a bad situation necessarily, but in a situation that requires us to be flexible. And perhaps it's, it's time has come. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Next, with some observations. Next.
Thank you, Tom. Yeah, I have a full disclosure. I'm possibly the only person who's not living in Hudson. I live in Newport across the street. What is important to me and why I'm here is, I believe if Hudson does well, so does Newport. And there is, and these two are basically linked to each other. So I cannot sit idly by when Hudson isn't doing too well. But the main thing I wanted to bring up today is, I don't want to talk about this charter. I don't know what will happen with it on the ballot. It may pass, it may not pass. However, we have a room here with only four mayoral candidates, the current council members and some future council members. What is important to me is that if it were not to pass in November, that whatever is happening right now, and I feel that this, that this keeps happening, we, I think 2025 has been a pretty lively debate across the city on various topics, and it would be a terrible loss if this somehow didn't happen anymore when the charter failed on the council, right? So this is something that I would expect people, let the truth come out, to, to, to consider and hopefully do. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Michael Schmuss.
Thanks, Council, for having this. And for those who don't know me, Michael Schmuss is a board supervisor, former mayor of LA. When I think about this project, I think my goals and I think I hope your goals are the same, which is that we all deserve as residents of the city of Hudson to be able to shape the decisions that are being made. We, we deserve to be able to help shape who are the decision makers. I think that's sort of the core of democracy, but also that's the core of how we get the best outcomes. So not only am I elected official, I also work with elected officials and the cities and the city managers all across the country. So I come into this thinking about not only the city, but how, how, how does good governance work? And I think one of the advantages that we want is we do want a chief executive that we can help shape. So we want to be able to have chief executive that voters can choose, that voters can elect. We have a clear path of asking, when people want something, you know, who to ask for. And I'll sort of give an aside is that my experience on the board supervisors, the 23 people, without a real clear chief executive, is that power sometimes can be diffuse, can be unclear who is the decision maker. And I think that makes it harder for voters to engage, for it to be clear about accountability and who's making decisions. And I think it's a real value and asset to have a very, very clear person who is the decision maker and who voters, who is accountable to voters. And this proposal strips out a lot of the power from the mayor. The mayor still, still exists, but the chief executive would then be obfuscated through this, through the city manager position. It also does something else where the mayor would sort of retain some of these like public engagement aspects of the mayoral role, but then not have the chief executive role. And I actually think that it's advantageous for the chief executive to have those public engagement roles. And some of the ways that elected officials make decisions is by engaging with the public, is by engaging with higher-level elected officials, and that's sort of, that helps shape decisions. When you can, when you're the person talking to the state, federal government, and you're also the person talking to your neighbors, those are all decision-making points. And I think to sort of stick the mayor off to the side to do the ceremonial stuff as if it's just, as if it's just pomp, but then doesn't actually shape decisions is a mistake. And so I think we want it, I think it's really important to marry the decision-making aspects and the public engagement aspects, as well as the lobbying our higher-level elected officials. And so I think I would encourage you all to keep those structures in place. The other thing that it does is it moves really critical appointments out of an elected official position into the city manager to make appointments. And some of the naysayers say, well, you know what, maybe we shouldn't trust elected officials to make appointments. But then ironically, it places the most important appointment that one can make in the hands of elected officials because the city manager is in essence, would be appointed by the council. And so I think it, it sort of does this weird step where the council would become elected, would then elect the city. would then elect, would then appoint the city manager, who would then appoint all these other people who are powerful. And I just think that it obviously is the decision-making, it obviously is accountability. So I think it really takes us in the wrong direction. The other aspect is that by removing that council president, it also sort of obviously gets one more piece, or at least removing the citywide elected council president. Where most people, under the charter reform system, most people would not be electing the council president. They would be electing one person who was one-fifth of the votes who creates the council president. So four-fifths of the city would, would have a council president who's mostly representing a ward that's not theirs. And so again, that, that obfuscates who is making decisions and who is being represented, and how do we, as residents, help shape those decision-making powers? And then if you go to the, one of the most important things the government can do is create our budget. You then have a council president represented by one board, and then a city manager appointed by the council becomes two-thirds of the budget-making body. So a lot of the budget-making decisions, the most important pieces, it's going to be very hard for the public to sort of engage and hold accountable how that budget gets created. One other piece is that then they're also giving the city manager a veto power over, over the council when the council actually wants to make changes to that budget, which also creates a very obscure rule. It's rarely unheard of, I think, to have an appointed person have, even though they say it's just a small veto power, they're still giving veto power to an appointed person over an elected body, is incredibly bizarre. And it really also, it sort of disrupts this whole idea that the city manager is sort of doing the will of the elected people. The city manager actually has veto power. So what I would call to you is I would say, my recommendation is, is that if we want to, we want to balance professionalism and elected decision-making power, hire a manager, but have, you know, hire a planner or who can then be appointed by the mayor and can work in the mayor's office and he can have an executive. The other thing I'd get rid of is I would get rid of the commissioner system. It's very bizarre that you have these volunteers who then, you have a mayor who then appoints volunteers and so much. Okay.
Thank you. Mayor Kamala Johnson.
Good evening. So the first thing I'll say about this, like, we do need a charter change. Our charter definitely needs to be updated, but not in a way that's done in the dark. If we are, if it's truly a citizens initiative, then it should involve all the citizens and not just the small few. Now, it was mentioned that we were asked to participate. We were asked to participate after the document was finalized, like after it was done. If this was, if this started two years ago, why weren't we asked two years ago? And one of the things that, the key things that are being left out is the cost of the city manager. Now, I called around to some cities that have city managers, and the average cost of city manager is $130,000. That's double the mayor's salary. On top of that, we're going to have to add fringe and staff. Now, for those, you guys had your time. Now, for those who, you know, want to go to this position, it's only going to raise taxes, but they've been lying to the public saying that it's going to decrease taxes and save funding. So if it's not going to raise taxes, then I would love to see where that, those funds are going to come out. What services are we going to lose? Are they going to attack our youth center funds? Are they going to lower our police officers? You know, are we going to have less money for PPW? These are all things that have not been answered. So when you have a budget, not to mention all of the cities that transferred into a city manager system also had to hire a consultant and a trans, and a transition team as well. That's all money that it's going to cost. None of this has been mentioned at all. So I ask the council to take a serious look at this and, you know, vote in favor of the, you know, our city and not just a few who got together for a few years. Thank you.
Thank you. He just respected me. He said.
I don't have anything to add about what's really been said very much. You've heard about the genesis of everything that we did. It took us two years to study everything. It then took us a year to write up what we, our, it was at the beginning of that third year, after two years, that we asked the city council members and the resident of the city council and the mayor to join us, and they all pretty much said, yeah. I think that all of the critiques that you've heard are not unvalid. I think that a lot of them have a rational basis. The important aspect of all of this, of course, is the fact that we started by ourselves and gave ourselves this really narrow mandate. We were only going to look at this one aspect of charter change for a variety of the reasons that you've already heard and that you've read, that you'll probably hear again. So we didn't feel, you know, that we could do a comprehensive job. And as the mayor points out, it requires an entire city. You have to actually start at the top, and that requires something to start. Nobody would. We have. We've given you the opportunity to pick up this conversation and move it forward. You can work with what we've given you, or you can reject it out of hand. That's irrelevant, really. We're 100 signatures away from getting it on the ballot, and we will, whether you join us or not. We wanted to be cooperative. We want to work with everybody in the city. We've worked and listened to Peter Spears, and he has really strong ideas about the citizen initiatives. The citizen initiative that we undertook, of course, is enshrined in just a couple of small places. One is in the state constitution, the other's in the general municipal law, the other's in the general city law, and the other, and the most important one, is in the home rule law. They're all New York state statutes. The 60-day limit that's been decreed as something that this group of citizens has somehow foisted on the council, that's statutory. We didn't come up with it. We didn't come up with the way to do this. The founders of New York State did, and the legislature took it from there. We're just working within the system. There's nothing nefarious about what we're doing. There's nothing underhanded about what we're doing. Nothing was done in the dark. I actively recruited as many people as I could to join me three years ago. Two peoples took up the challenge, and I thank them. And we worked together on and off over two years of studying other New York State cities' charters to understand what they did, why they did, what worked, what didn't. Did we come up with a perfect iteration of what we were trying to come up with? No. Anybody who would argue that is, you know, frankly foolish. It's a city charter, it's a living dogma, it's like a constitution. It's meant to be constantly worked on. It's to make a better unit, not a perfect unit, a more perfect unit. And that's what we've tried to give you, and we hope you take it up. But if you don't, then the voters will. And it, whether it wins or loses, it doesn't matter. This genie's out of the bottle. People want it, they recognize the need for it. I don't have to reiterate the reasons that were given today and the ones that you all see when you walk outside.
Thanks. Thank you. Next is Nick Zachal.
Thank you. Trying to keep my comments brief. I will speak as someone who, I think at this point, I would say that I support charter reform. But I don't think I support this version of it. I can say confidently that I actually don't support this version of it. I was interested to see what the folks who put it together came up with, and I'm thankful that they, that they, that they gave it a shot. But in reading the document, in reading other people's assessment of it, and in attending two of the meetings that they put on, I was able to come to my conclusion, I think instead of going over a long list, say one thing that I feel like, one subject that really made it clear to me was a question that was asked at the first public event about why they decided not to include the treasurer. And the answer was, you're not allowed to. Can't do it in New York state law. I thought, okay, that's interesting. I didn't realize that. When I attended the second meeting, it was brought up again, and then the answer changed. And it was not that it's not allowed by New York state law, that actually we trust the current treasurer and we think that she's doing a good job. And so we didn't include her in this. And to me, that was the defining feature of a charter reform proposal that seems specifically aimed at current elected officials while leaving in the elected officials that this group has a relationship with or trusts. And to me, I think if we're going to do charter reform, we need to do it the right way. We need to do it comprehensively. And we need to do it in a way that brings together the entire city as part of the process to help shape it and decide what we want, and not just have one that's drawn up by a very small group of people. My apologies.
Thank you.
He's got us, uh, prepared for the next one.
Let's go ahead then to Nathan.
I guess I mostly, I agree with a lot of things Nathan just said. I don't have a prepared, prepared speech yet, but I think for me, I, I wish that this group had, had like brought some people in. Because I think there's been a lot of really good feedback from a variety of people. And the way to do citizens charter reform is one that should involve everyone in town and drafting the document and getting feedback from everyone. So it resulted in a stronger document. The document was come up with, experts had said it's a mess. Like, I think it's drafted in incoherent ways, it can be very carefully. It's really unfortunate that we just like rushed ahead with gathering signatures instead of taking a beat, so like just get a little bit of feedback from someone that is not part of the street before, before rushing ahead. And so I think it's particularly irresponsible that the service is like continuing to push to put some ballot at this point, having received all of that feedback, instead, instead of starting over again and involving the community and then moving forward. Because I, I think there are a lot of good ideas there. I think there are things that it doesn't actually tackle, but it would also be good ideas. And I think we need to have this conversation as a community to come up with the best option we can, rather than doing something in the back room and then forcing it on town.
About 12 years ago, when we first organized at this meeting, a group of us, it was around like access to youth, youth services. Then we went to the school district, it was around Penn Station. And what we found out there was all this internal conversation like, what a superintendent makes that decision, whether it's a teacher or a head due, and the community organizers said, no, we want the elected people to make that decision. We, you pick the superintendent, but we pick you, right? In a democracy, I feel like we should, people should be accountable. The elected should be accountable to the people who sent them there. There should be a boogie man, you know? I, I, you know, this is a survey. We had a boogie man for a very long time. God bless his soul, Charlie Butter. We don't need that. You know, some of you may not have been here during that time, right? We don't need that. We need people who are representative of the community, who are picked by the community. We need a charter change that brings communities together, that speaks to all the different ethnic backgrounds and socioeconomic. Not, not a group of people who just got together, wrapped some coffee, probably made it off, and, and made this decision, right? Well, I can say, I know some stuff. That should call me up. There's some people downtown in the high rise who know some stuff. There's people around, and we might have come up with something great that everybody could agree on. And I never could have supported something where we removed the first black mayor in this city. That's ridiculous. Especially as we're trying to fight the fascists up there, we're trying to do the same thing down here. It's ridiculous. So get back to the drawing board. Bring some more people together. You might have more friends any day. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good evening. Hello, everybody. My name is Peter Spear. I live in the fourth ward. I'm running for mayor if I get the signatures. And, yeah, I mean, I feel like my position on this has been consistent. You know, that the city really needs charter reform. There's a need to bring city government kind of into the 21st century. And these folks took the first step in kind of making it a public conversation. And for that, I'm really grateful. But the, the process leaves a lot to be desired. The critiques of the actual revisions seem really significant for real problems. It's a flawed process. I take real issue with the fact that it was like a surgical procedure. When I reached out to people I knew at the National Civic League, I also think it's sort of ironic that the folks that are arguing for the magical powers of professional management did not, in fact, access any of the best practices from the two professional organizations that manage city managers or city charter. The National Civic League is the oldest good governance organization in the country. They make no reference to it anywhere in their process. They publish the model city charter. There's been nine versions over the last 100 years. If I were to do that, I would start with those who know how to do it. I talked to one of the guys at the National Civic League about this process, and I'm just sharing this with you because I geek out on this stuff. But he said, you know how often you get a chance to actually do work on a city charter? Do you have any idea how special that is? You know? And I think what most offends me about this process is that they robbed us of an opportunity to have a meaningful conversation about the kind of government that we want. And there are a dozen questions that we could all be asking each other and talking about that we were not given a chance to. And for that reason, I vehemently oppose this revision, this change. And I passionately ask for charter reform in a truly representative way. And I hope that if I'm elected mayor, that's what I would do. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Uh, next up is someone online.
I signed the list earlier.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Donna Straits. Sorry, my mistake.
Excuse me, everyone. Donna Straits. My husband and I are residents and homeowners in First Ward. We love our city, but what, what we don't love is its function of our current form of governance, the seemingly uncaring and unconcerned performance of our mayor, the amount of time I and other concerned citizens have to spend doing research, attending meetings, writing letters, signing petitions, or getting signatures, experiencing angst about pilot programs, looming property tax increases, dangerous sidewalks, the future of our waterfront that is in the hands of our inexperienced, fear-provoking mayor-appointed planning board, et cetera. Something has to change. I'm not part of the charter change group, but after hearing about their efforts and goals and reading the proposed charter changes, I read the entire document and talked to many who also did. I volunteered to help collect petition signatures because I felt that change is sorely needed. I know it may not be perfect, but it's the start of a conversation. Peter and I are in favor of the changes proposed in the citizens initiative for charter change, and we appeal to the common council to not disregard it, but to seriously consider it and have proposed, I propose modifications to address any changes you may have. I希 your consideration.
Thank you. And again, I apologize for picking the main guy. Now, the people online first is Adolfo Lopez.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My apologies for not being able to be present physically, but Adolfo Lopez, I'm a fifth ward resident. And frankly, I am, as well as Peter, vehemently opposed to this charter change. This decision will alter the foundation of our city's democracy. This proposal aims to replace the elected voice of the people with an unelected, unaccountable city manager. You know, it's not just a simple administrative adjustment. It is a direct threat to the very essence of democratic governance in the city of Hudson. The mayoral system is rooted in the most fundamental democratic principle, accountability to the people. When we elect a mayor... the people. When we elect a mayor, we are not merely selecting a figurehead. We are entrusting an individual with the responsibility of our city's future. By moving to a city manager system, we reduce the most powerful tool we have as residents, which is our vote. A city manager is appointed. They're not elected. They serve at the pleasure of the common council. If we are dissatisfied with their leadership, there's no ballot box through which to express our frustration, only layers of bureaucracy that shield them from the consequences of poor decision-making. You know, proponents of this change argue that a city manager will bring professionalism and expertise. However, expertise should never come at the expense of transparency. A city manager, no matter how qualified, is not beholden to the values, aspirations, and lived experiences of the people of Hudson. Their allegiance is to process and policy, not to the pulse of our neighborhood. Hudson's challenges require more than management. They require leadership, like Mayor Johnson. They require someone who understands that governance is not just about balancing budgets and administering services. It's about listening to the people, standing with the marginalized, and ensuring that every person has a seat at the table. A city manager by design is a bureaucrat. They're trained to manage, not to inspire. They're trained to implement, not to lead. Hudson needs a leader who feels the weight of their decisions because they know that their position is a direct reflection of the community's trust. I'm not fooled by the argument that this change will eliminate political divisions or inefficiencies. In reality, it does the opposite. It consolidates power into the hands of a select few. It reduces the diverse voices of Hudson, which are many, to a whisper. With the city manager, decisions that affect our neighborhoods, our families, and our futures will be made behind closed doors. A city manager is not bound by the same transparency obligations as an elected mayor. We all have a responsibility to safeguard our democracy. We must reject this proposal, not because we fear change, but because we understand that not all change is progress. We must fight for a system for the people's voice, not bureaucratic convenience to guide the future of Hudson. Thank you.
Thank you, Adolfo. Next up is Joshua Cohen.
Hello. Thank you, Tom. My name is Joshua Cohen. I live in the Fifth Ward. Thank you for holding this public hearing. In general, I am in favor of charter reform for the city of Hudson, as well as measures to professionalize government. But I would hope that it would be more comprehensive and the result of input from deep community engagement. I appreciate that the current proposal is spurring this hearing and much local chatter on the topic, but I have serious concerns about what's laid out here. I worry that this proposal as written gives entirely too much power to an unelected position within city government. I worry about the veto power on the financial side of an unappointed person. I also worry about the significant reduction of the common council, the number of representatives that represent all of us in the city of Hudson that this proposal outlines. These basic changes would offer us less representation, especially at a time when we need to uplift our democracy. I encourage you to consider my concerns and the other concerns that we're hearing today. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joshua. Hold on, wait, there's still some. Ron, come, Nicky. Ron?
Hello. Matt McGee would actually like to make a remark. Thank you.
Okay. Who's Matt McGee?
Yes. Charter change does need to happen, but the proposed system of government change does not. The mayor as the executive officer for veto powers, oversight duties, the number of council members per ward, the election of a council member at large by the people as chair of the council, is an unusually democratic aspect of our current charter that empowers the people. All this should remain as is. The title of council president has led to confusion in the past. It should be dropped in favor of council chair and council member at large. Athens had a quorum of 6,000 to do business. Hudson now has a quorum of six. The proposed quorum of three means the chair would only need two members to conduct business, two members present to conduct business, and only two votes in order to prevail. In order to secure responsible governments, government governance, standing oversight committees of government departments and boards should be reinstated. This also empowers council members who chair the committees. These committees are the norm and a important part of our constitutional republican form of government. Mayoral appointments should be vetted by the council. The job of assistant to the mayor should be defined in the charter. Separation of powers, separation of powers aids are representative form of government and should be maintained. For example, the mayor should not be in the chamber when council is meeting, much less having a city manager chosen and hired by the council, running government departments, replacing the elected mayor. The power of the purse cannot be given away to IDA or any other agent of government than the city council. The council members need to guard their prerogatives and usurpation and misuse, from mutterpation refuse. The New York Assembly and state and the government oversight committees, the state attorney general, the New York Department of State and others should use their powers to protect, investigate, and enforce the open meetings law, among other laws, enabling the people to fully understand the processes of government actions leading to final outcomes and expenditures. A general regard for the Constitution and its protections of the privileges and immunities of the people is needed on the state and local level, who encourage a more responsive and responsible republican form of government as called for in the Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Is that Ron? Did you want to speak as well?
Well, I, first of all, I would like to thank you for opening this meeting through remote access because I think it really fulfills the goal of the open meetings law. I would just like to say that, you know, I don't think the city manager, I have certain disagreements with certain details of this plan. I don't think the city manager form should be castigated as being unnecessarily unrepresentative. As I understand it, the council is going to be setting policy and the role of the city manager, aside from the veto of the audit, is basically ministerial. In other words, he carries out the policy set by the council. I agree that the mayor could be seen as veto. There are some city, city manager forms of government where the mayor's dispensed altogether. I don't think the mayor need be merely charged. I think the mayor could, the role of the mayor, I'm assuming that the mayor can also still propose legislation. The mayor can perhaps speak on, as one of the, I don't know if you mentioned, speak on a higher level, on a more philosophical level, and perhaps the role could become almost like that of a kind of ombudsman.
Please speak up, please.
I'm sorry. The mayor could become, could assert his role as almost being that of a kind of ombudsman, in which he would represent the people as a whole and use the bully pulpit as well as his veto power and as well as his power to propose legislation to take issue with, 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 you know, proposals that he felt were unwise. I'm also assuming that the vetting, the hiring and the vetting of the city manager will be a perfectly transparent process in which council members, there will be public hearings in which council members will be able to ask questions, and the public will be able to ask questions, and we will be satisfied that the council is making the best choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Okay, those are all the people who have signed up to this speech. Other, we have plenty of time, and we've been respectful and civil, so let's, if someone else would like to speak. Okay, well, Roy was up first, but you let Roy go.
Do you want to go first? Thank you, third son. Council members, saw us dear body. I will just come right out.
Right, right. You're addressing the council.
Yes, I understand, but I'm running for mayor.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Third son, thank you. Okay, so council. The arguments I'm hearing here today, I find less than convincing. What we're describing are failures of operation and execution. I will say that the essence of management is caring, error. And maybe we haven't had enough of that in order to, you know, execute. I will say personnel is policy. It's policy. Personnel makes a difference. And if you're going to run a ship, I mean, are you running a ship or are you just loading along? So I think again, it's, you're going to have the same issue with the city manager if you don't hire correctly. I don't know that the city manager, you know, whether they come from whatever school, Harvard, or, you know, wherever they might come from, you know, you know, I don't know that they're going to care and perform. We have performance problems here. I mean, Cristo's point is well taken. I mean, how many plans have there been? Yeah, we got a ferry. Okay, when was that? Ninety-six or when did the ferry come? You know, you got a ferry. That was nice. You got the, okay. All right, but there's been plans and plans and plans and through, you know, I'm, you keep running into the same issues. So I am running for mayor. Personnel is policy. The essence of management is caring. And that's what I have to say. And I really, I don't see, this is the solution. I just don't see this as the solution.
Thank you, Ron.
Yeah.
You ready?
Hi, everyone. I'm Elizabeth Dinkie. I'm a Fifth Ward resident. And I think I just want to get out there that I, I do object to this version of charter reform, although I do believe that we need it. I will keep my points to one, just because I think that opposition has been well covered, which is to say that, you know, I've heard from the folks who have put together the charter reform, the current version, that they were, you know, really limited in their scope, that they wanted to undertake a minor change, that they understand that this wasn't a comprehensive attempt at charter reform, and also that it has some flaws, as we've already discussed. I find it really concerning that the mechanism by which we're, that we're now confronted with is that in its current form, it will move onto the ballot potentially if enough signatures are collected, and that the same group that is admitting to these problems with the current version of the charter are also expressing interest in moving it forward and putting it on the ballot. You know, I understand how voting works and how elections work and how, you know, referendums work, but I find it just concerning that the same group who admits the shortcomings of their own version are also willing to take it to the people as it is. I don't support that at all. And I really ask you wholeheartedly to think about what that means. That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes. Oh, and that's Mayor O'Connell.
Thank you for the introduction, Mayor. My name is Joe Ferris. I live in the Fifth Ward. I have, Tom said, also running for mayor. I agree with a lot of what's been said in terms of the issues with this proposal. I do think, in the sense that I have gotten where I land, is we need a charter revision commission that includes the entire community. The charter covers everybody. It impacts everybody. And that is why you should have a process that allows everyone in the community to speak. And if elected, that would be the first thing I'd do on day one. Thank you.
Okay. Turn that into a, a message. Anyone else?
This is a public hearing. I don't have much to add to the conversation except to add my name to the list of people who turned out to oppose the charter reform package as presented. I think when this rolled out on my block, a lot of us looked at each other and felt like we knew exactly what was going on, and we didn't like it. And all the community that I've talked to in the Fifth Ward, where I live, where my sister lives, my snappy lived, I've been invested in the city of Hudson since I was 20 years old, never lived in New York City, moved straight here from North Georgia to find opportunities and farms. We all felt like we knew exactly what was going on. And I think that the city deserves a comprehensive process through which to evaluate our charter. I'll say I'm also somebody who's found myself literally knee-deep in records of past administrations and their incompetence and the problems of, of choices that were made by, you know, unelected appointed people to reconfigure the terrain of the town, especially the North Bay neighborhood. And even just in the last two or three years of the functioning of the HDPDA, where I was like kind of a forensic economic organization. I understand what we, what we lack, when we lack qualified capacity on top of the capacity that we already have and the passion that our current administration and the labors of any sort of particular political organization that brings to running the government. And when I say like, we all know exactly what was going on when we looked at this proposal, it's just, yeah, I feel like my comments really summed it up. Exactly as you said. So just another fifth of the resident being mentally opposed to what's being designed.
Thank you. Anyone else? Finished. Third. Perfect. Name?
Hi, good evening. My name is Nathaniel Doino. I'm a resident of the Fourth Ward. I've been listening to the discourse on this council charter for a while with a lot of the ease, the words, a lot of the proposals, a lot of the language underneath the proposals. I've heard a lot of things people are trying to look forward here that they're not saying, and that's been really, maybe really felt uncomfortable. I did study city planning and I, for now, I've been a student of local government politics for 25 years. I've sat on planning boards. I've been involved with city government, not here, mostly in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, because had our own issue with mayoral discourse, council issues. Sorry, I'm a little nervous right now. I've heard that I'm speaking for council. I think if anyone, a professional city planner, were to look at this process, they would say this is a professional way to approach such a fundamentally important change to how the city is run. And I really liked your comments about, hey, this is important. I agree. This is important. I agree that we need charter reform. But the idea that this is the way to do it seems farcical. And the idea that, again, really like some of your comments that, like, hey, this is a flawed thing, but it's either this or nothing. We should move forward with it, I think doesn't reflect a sincere accounting of what these, the people who proposed this are staying and they want to accomplish. So I encourage you to not support this version of charter reform. I consider other ways to bring more community in, to bring more professionals. I've heard a lot of world lawyers who looked at this over a couple of years, discords, and a lot of, you're for city planners. Yeah, professional city managers who've looked at this. So, yeah, thank you for your time tonight. Appreciate your consideration and for hosting such a thoughtful forum for getting a public.
Thank you. What's your last name again?
Nathaniel Doino.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, is our number? Okay, there are no further comments. This public hearing is now concluded. Thank you all for coming. Oh, quick comments again. Submitted as late as Thursday, this will be the five minutes.